At the Veterans Memorial Building. If you could all stand and we'll sit in the pledge legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and the first item on the agenda is a special permit application with site plan approval. Public hearing continued for GTE Millis LLC. And I'm going to just have to read the announcement, please.
Town and Millis Office of the Planning Board notice a public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 40A, Section 11 Mass. General Law, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 7th, 2021, in Room 229 Veterans Memorial Building. An application submitted by GTE Millis LLC, 225 North Pearl Street, Brockton, Mass., 02301, is requesting a special permit, site plan approval, of the zoning bylaw of the Town and Millis for proposed construction of the marijuana cultivation facility located at 1480 and 1486 Main Street, Millis, Mass. Assessors map 21, lots 9, 26, 28, 29, and 30, and map 32, Lot 2. Owner: A.H. Cedar LLC, Peter Harkey. Copy of the application and site plan is on file in the office of the Town Clerk and on the Planning Board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
All right, thank you. So, just to let people know where this location is. So, it's down on 109. It's before the auto salvage place, and it's a little past Black Cow. If you're going towards Medway, it's on the left-hand side. It's an open lot which has some old industrial buildings that have been abandoned for at least 20 to 30 years. So, that's where this would be built. And you guys were here last meeting. Beta had some questions earlier, which you had addressed in that. And I think Caitlin filled in and went through that. I think we went through just about all the items. And then we had asked for an update on just a landscaping concept plan, which you're going to present tonight.
Yes, that's most of my summary right there.
Good, I made it even easier.
You absolutely did. For the record, Eric Dias, Registered Professional Engineer with Strong Point Engineering Solutions. With me tonight from the applicant is Jemmen Patel and Legal Counselor is Patrick Sullivan. You're absolutely right. When we walked out of here at the last meeting, we had gone over some comments with Beta. We had like four action items. Satisfy Beta's comments, get a landscaping plan to you folks, get a rendering of the building with the landscaping to show how we're going to kind of soften that. And then four was to produce a formal waiver request letter. So, we have met with Beta. We went through, I think, two rounds of comments with Beta, and we've recently received a pretty favorable review letter from them. I think most of the action items are satisfied and/or suggested to be conditions of approval. This is the planting plan. And we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting. By, under the bylaw, we're required something like, I think it's 46 total trees. And because of the nature of what this is, being a cultivation facility, trees are bad, is what it comes down to, because they attract insects. Insects get in the plant, contaminate the product, and it's a situation to deal with. So, what we've done is we've greatly reduced plantings on this site and focused them all in the front of the building here with the express purpose of softening it from the roadway. We're actually proposing a total of nine trees. We've got some dogwoods, I think some shag bark, and some red maples out there. This is a rendering of what it's going to look like from the road. So, you can see that it really does kind of add a lot of color. All the plants that have been chosen are native plants, so they're going to take very well. They were selected because they provide an array of colors throughout the course of the year. So, it's not like these things are just going to be green in spring and summer and then barren the rest of the year. They're going to change colors with the foliage. So, they're going to give a year-round softening.
And just one question on that, which I emailed to you guys. So, the rendering shows that's probably like a, you know, a 10-inch caliper, 12-inch caliper tree that's about 40 feet tall.
That's a few years in.
When you first plant them, they will be smaller plants, just so everyone is aware. That's that in a few years.
That's correct. This is probably the view 10 years down the road, let's say. What we're planning to plant to start with is a 3-inch DBH. Those are going to grow. The red maples will be about 40 feet tall. The other trees will be in the 20 to 25-foot range at full maturity. So, this is a little bit advanced here. But that said, the trees, when they come in at a 3-inch DBH, most of these are going to be at least 12, 15 feet tall to start with. So, they're fairly sizable trees. So, that's the rendering and a brief summary, the executive overview of the planting plan. And then lastly is the waiver request. We did request three waivers. One with regard to the size of the parking stall. The bylaw requires nine by 21. We have requested 10 by 20, which is actually 11 square feet bigger than what the bylaw requires. Number two is with regard to the, excuse me, the loading requirement. Under the bylaw, this building, just based on its size, would be required to have five loading bays, and we believe that we only need two to service a particular need here. And then number three is again for the number of trees. We're required to have 46. We're proposing nine. But we're also proposing to make a donation to the town's tree fund in lieu of the differential, the 37 trees. So, really, that's the summary. Glad to take any questions or go your direction, Mr. Chair.
No, that's fine. Anyone on the board have any questions?
George. What is the actual color of this building?
It's this white color that you see here. In fact, I've got, let me pull this one off. I've got another rendering that doesn't have the trees in it, so we can see a little bit better. But it is proposing to be, sorry about all that. So, the building, this is the same view from the front without the trees. It's a white building with a green sign and some gray screening fencing, things like that, to screen the mechanicals.
So, the top photo and the middle photo, that's the other sides of the building?
This is, yes, that's correct. So, this view that you're seeing here is of the main entrance to the building, which is actually located down here. The main entrance is here. So, that's looking this way. The view of the rendering is standing on Main Street, looking at the building this way.
Go ahead, Alan. Hi. First point about the trees. It's certainly an improvement over the bare look that was presented originally. And you mentioned the different colors at different times of year. Regardless of that, you're going to have bare trees six months out of the year. So, it seems to be half the solution.
There are going to be some bare trees. They have proposed some evergreens out here, too, to leave some color there and some foliage in the wintertime. But yes, for example, the red maples, the bigger trees, they will lose their foliage in the fall and in the winter months.
It seems sort of a presentation perspective of what people see. We want to see more green year-round.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's a good point. The only thing is that is a 70,000-square-foot warehouse. We'd have to plant some big trees to hide that. So, your point is well taken. I mean, they should, yeah.
Evergreen pine trees.
Yeah, yeah, maybe if you had a couple of evergreens in there.
We can certainly take a look at adding some of the evergreens, maybe even swapping out some of these, some of these whiter colored trees with some evergreens or something like that, some more abreviatey type of things. I'd be fine with that.
My other point with parking, I mean, I'm inclined to approve this, but I just wanted to be on the record that we, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we recently attempted to change the bylaws for the parking. And the town was pretty adamant about not reducing the length of the spaces. So, while you are in excess of the 189 square feet, the 200 square feet, you're a little short. But, you know, it's not a shopping center. It's not a condominium complex. It's a building that the public isn't going to be accessing.
That's right.
So, that one foot isn't enough of a difference for me to vote now. But I do want to be on the record for that, since we may be setting a precedent.
Sure, thank you, well taken.
Josh, you good?
A point of clarification. So, I noticed that there will be 23 extra parking spaces for visitors. Is that correct? I just want to understand exactly what the parking situation is.
Yeah, let me go over to that sheet. So, it's 23 more spaces than what the bylaw requires.
Okay.
We feel that for our use and our need, we're going to use those parking spaces.
Are you designating them as visitors?
We are not designating them specifically as visitor spaces. In fact, I don't imagine, and Jemmen, you can probably speak better to this than I am, I don't imagine you'll ever have 23 visitors at the exact same time in this building.
Sometimes people, if everyone drove their own vehicles, it's possible. But also, the other thing, they stayed recently, last year, they passed allowing deliveries from their wholesale warehouse. And we don't know where the industry's going to go in five or 10 years. So, it's one of those things right now.
I got that from here.
Build an extra 10 or 15 spots, it's relatively inexpensive versus trying to do that only.
Okay.
And are we that much over? I thought parking spaces are only a few stalls over.
Okay.
One stall per six. Yeah, we're required to have 123 stalls. We have 125. So, I think there was some talk early on about maybe we could seek a waiver to have less stalls if we didn't feel that we needed them. Unfortunately, I think just based on business operations, we do need the stalls that the bylaw calls for.
Yeah, the previous application, they had, they had already existing parking, and they had acres of parking.
Sure.
And so, you know, if, you know, if you didn't need it, you know, our comment was, you know, we don't need that, you don't need to put it in. So, and they decided they didn't need it. But if that's what you need, that sounds great to me.
Sure.
Did you have anything?
I do, just with regards to the sign. The signs on the exterior of the building are bylaw. I see from your two different renderings, you'll have three different signs. Or, excuse me, two, yeah.
Two signs.
Two signs, one by the main entrance.
Well, you've got two signs, but you've got one that technically is two because it's on two sides of the building. So, you've got signs on three sides of the building.
Okay, sure.
That does need to be reduced to one.
Does need to be reduced to one. We can do that, no problem?
Yeah, yeah.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Now, in here on P. 6, reference previous decisions have considered the donation of $700 per tree. Okay, so you're considering 37 trees?
37 trees is the, is the.
$700 a whack.
$700 a whack.
So, that's $25,900 to the town.
That's correct.
All right, just wanted to clarify that.
Sure.
So, you guys are on board for that and, so, okay.
Melissa, did you have a thing? Or I think we went through it pretty, pretty well last meeting, and they answered. I read the latest update on stuff. You had stuff you deferred to us, which we'll have to walk through.
Right.
But I think pretty much everything got answered.
Everything got answered, yeah. We had an engineering meeting and brought up a couple more things. They addressed the issues with the test pits, and they're going to do those before construction and have someone out there, representative of the town, to confirm the subsols, as opposed to doing more right now and revise the design. So, we're feeling pretty comfortable about that. Yeah, otherwise, it's just up to the board on the waivers,
which I think have been covered. Yeah, we have the waivers, and also when we go through this, we'll have to walk through the, your comments on.
On the conditions. There's a few conditions, yeah, that we're recommending. Obviously, you talked about the noise and the odor being conditioned to be reviewed.
Right.
Through the Board of Health.
Right. And on that, just so everyone in the audience knows, the way that we've, and that we've decided that, or the town has decided along with the Board of Health is we will, if we go ahead and approve the site and the building, that will allow them to develop their mechanical plan, which includes the HVAC and noise and the equipment. And then they would have, they would work with the Board of Health to get that approved. But at least that way, they know the space itself and the property would be buildable, provided to get a building from it, which isn't us.
Yes.
And that review on the, the way it had been held in the, in the last project was by a specialist in noise and odor, so not necessarily Beta having the expertise on that. And the sequence of events previously was that a scope of fee was collected by the Planning Board at the time of the application, because we hadn't yet determined that it would be deferred to the Board of Health. Then that money got transferred to the Board of Health. I don't know whether that.
I think that could be.
You just deal with that when you get to the Board of Health and don't condition anything.
If they need the permit, they should just, if it's going through the Board of Health, then the Board of Health should handle that and.
Right.
Goods keep it clean.
And they'll have a.
Right.
Their own review fee or whatever's associated with that. That previously had been dealt with by the applicant.
All right, if, if there's no. Any questions from the audience? Caitlin, anyone? No?
One more.
Go ahead, George.
Now, you said we're going to go with one sign?
Well, we should, what's the, on the bylaw? I mean, what's, I can't remember the bylaw, but I think they're allowed to have one on the building.
One on the building. And so, in effect, what you have there is you have one sign face at the entrance on the building. Then you have one sign on the street front. But the one that's on the street front then wraps around with its emblem.
You are such a technical person.
That's my job. So, even, I mean, either way, whether you consider that two or three, it's still more than one. So, if the sign is going to be, if you're going to go with the sign that's at your entrance, then that's, that's your one sign. My question for the board would be if, if the applicant chooses that their sign is to be the one that faces the street, because that wraps around and has its emblem, the corporate emblem there, does, is, are we going to consider that one sign or two signs?
Yeah, I mean, what would, what, do you guys have a preference over where you think you might want to have that sign? Would you want it in the front or the back?
So, we can either have it facing Main Street here, or we can have it over the main entrance.
Now, you can have, you can have the address on there. So, you could put the address on, and if, like that one there, if you wanted to put that as whatever, whatever street number you're at, you could put that there.
Yeah.
And that can be, that can be big enough that people can see it from the road. So, if you want to identify the property for deliveries and stuff like that, you could, you're more than welcome, because that's not a sign. That's numbering. That's a different, a whole different ball of wax.
Sure.
Or in the alternative, I believe, you could remove the sign from the entrance and put it on, if it's on the window, if it's painted on the window, then that doesn't constitute a sign, correct?
That I'd have to check. I can't remember. The other thing is you could do a free-standing sign. They also could do that, too.
Right, you could have the sign, you could have the sign at your entrance and then have a free-standing sign on the street.
Free-standing sign on the front.
Yeah. So, there's options for you guys on that. But like Nicole said, that, you know, the two on the building, you know, is, and that has to be externally, that's externally lit, but, you know, actually, you say that.
Yes, it has to be externally.
Yeah.
No, that's industrial. The internal, the external lit, the, yeah, the requirement for externally lit is not within the industrial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We prefer internally, we prefer externally lit, but that regulation doesn't carry over to the, the industrial part.
What we do like is nice granite posts with a wooden sign and two lights.
Well, that's something that we can certainly take a look at. I think maybe, since we have so many options, maybe I might suggest the cleanest way to do this is a condition that says the signage shall comply with the applicable regulation, or we'd have to seek relief separately, just to cover it, but.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that would be.
But I don't anticipate that we would want to seek that relief. I think we'd just comply, whether it be sign on the building or, or free-standing sign in the front.
Well, you can do a sign on the building.
Yeah, you can do one sign of the building.
And you put the numbers on it, too. So, you know, that kind of leaves you with, you know, just the two signs on was the, was the only issue. But that still gives you a lot of options. And, you know, you guys have to decide how much, you know, how much advertising, not advertising, but how much you want people to know what that building is.
Go to 46.
You know, what would look nice? If you, you've got that O'Hara on the corner.
I do.
You could leave that there, but if you ran some.
Was it green and gold?
Green and gold is the color, yeah.
Run something across the building.
Because that's industrial.
And you could put the address on it.
Yeah.
That's going to break up the front of the white building.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's actually a very good point.
You know, and it's not going to cost you anything if you're just changing a few colors to, on the aluminum.
Sure. Yeah, it's a very good point.
Unfortunately, that's not the bill agenda town. It's becoming the marijuana capital of the world, I think. All right, if there's no other questions, I can make a motion that we close the hearing. Okay, so I make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Do we want to, now, how do we want to handle this? Do we want to walk through? Yeah, that's what I was going to say. We want to walk through the waivers. So, we'll do those one by one? We should.
And then we'll go through the conditions.
Okay. All right, I make a motion that we approve the waiver from Section 2, requirement for parking spaces to be at least nine feet in width and 21 feet in length, not having an area less than 189 square feet. Proposed parking spaces are 10 feet by 20 feet, having an area of 200 feet.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, other than the comment that was made by Alan, saying that he would like to keep with the original thing, sizes. Are there any other, is there any other discussion?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Weaver number two is sought from Table 8, oh, sorry, from.
Section 8, Table 5.
Section 8, Table 5, sorry. Requirement of one loading space per 15,000 square feet, or any fraction there of net area, with a building footprint of 73,800 square feet. A total of five loading spaces are required by the, our bylaw. They only need two spaces, loading spaces. And so, they're asking for a waiver for that. I make a motion that we approve that waiver.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Number three, the waiver is sought from Section, Section 7, C. 2, requirement for 46 trees. A total of nine trees are proposed for the project, which you're going to switch out some of them for maybe a swap for a deciduous for an evergreen.
Sure, we'll keep the same number of trees. We'll just swap them out, get some more green in there.
Okay. Due to the nature of the cultivation facility, the trees draw our insects. They are proposing to donate 37, wait, a total of 37 trees, for a total of $25,900 to the tree fund, in lieu of planting the trees. I make a motion that we approve that waiver.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we get through all that. Now, so we can discuss it. So, is there any discussion on, anything on the application for the special permit from the board? I think we've gone through it pretty well.
Mr. Chair, I did just have one comment.
Yeah.
And I'm sure this will be provided, but I'd taken note of water usage, and specifically that a pump may be required. This is going to follow site plan review, correct?
Yes.
Submission of the, the foundation of the project?
Yes.
So, I mean, it's fine as a condition. I just wanted to take note.
Yeah, I think, Melissa, you put that in with, that has to be reviewed and approved by the DPW.
Yeah, there's going to have to be, right, right. I think there's going to have to be a little back and forth with DPW. They have to do some more testing, maybe provide some more data to figure out. I know they weren't sharing complete water usage, and they need to design, you know, the facility and figure out exactly what it needs, and then coordinate with DPW, is my understanding on the flow.
That's 100% correct, yes. We, very similar to our odor systems and our HVAC systems, we haven't undertaken the full design of the water usage systems. Obviously, after we get through site plan review, should we be successful, we'll go to that step. And then once we have that data, we'll work with the DPW and whoever else we need to, to make sure that demand can be met.
I think the key was the town, there, there's identified a potential deficiency, and I think they understand that.
We do.
You know, that some, they might have to kick in something to make it work.
There is very low pressure in the, in the main, in that location, based on the hydrant flow test that we did a few months back. So, we know that we're going to have to, going to have to come up with something creative here.
All right.
So, that should be a condition?
It is a condition.
Okay.
Melissa, have that in here, so. So, I'm thinking, I want to make a motion to approve the special permit with site plan approval for 1480 and 1486 Main Street with the attached conditions. And Melissa, can you follow through your own notes, so I don't miss anything? All right. I didn't highlight it. Oh, you have it? You have it best. All right, so, special, okay, so special permit conditions. We recommend, so we would, we request a copy of the license issued by the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission to be submitted to the board prior to the start of construction, including all information required in Section 12, Q. SPS. Final license, and then, so what it says, I'll read it all. The applicant has submitted provisional licenses for cultivation and product manufacturing issued by the Cannabis Control Commission with a special permit submission. The final license is only received after the construction of the facility and the post-provisional license inspection by the Cannabis Control Commission. Our consultant recommended that this be part of the approval. So, we'd like to make that as part of our approval. Also, we already talked about this, that there would be a specialist in odor and noise review for the proposed establishment, which will be handled by the Board of Health. And that would be submitted to that under separate cover. So, that would be as part of the, they would have to get that for their, as part of the conditions.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt, if I may, but could I just ask the wording on the condition in regards to submitting the license? It sounds like you had some of the context of the timing there, but I believe they've submitted the provisional.
Yes.
So, could I just ask how that condition will be read?
Okay, let's go back to the other one?
Regarding their submission of the license.
Okay, so, let's see. So, that is a good question, Melissa. So, how does that work? So, they can't, no, I know, but they can't, they cannot give us the final.
Right.
Sign off until they finish building the building. So, all we can get from them is the provisional, the provisional license, because that's basically, they're saying, yeah, so that makes sense.
We can't even get a final license without having a certificate of occupancy. Then we submit it to them, and then they come.
Can we?
So, it would just be, be the provisional, the provisional licensing? Right, right.
So, we just leave, we'll just leave with provisional licensing and take out the, take out the final license part?
Yes. I think it's adding that term to clarify the type of license.
Absolutely. I believe they've either provided or can provide the provisional.
Provisional.
Okay, no, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Good catch. Thank you. Okay. Did you get the?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Sorry, estimated water usage for the proposed facility, which we just talked about, and confirmed with the DPW that there is adequate water supply. So, that, you guys will have to work with the DPW on that. And we're going to make that as part of the decision. So, how do we, that's a good question. So, on that one, Melissa, so how, how would we do that? They would have to, so if we approved it, that would be part, how could we make that part of the, obviously, they have to make sure the water's going to work, but they're not going to build it.
Right. So you're approving, on the condition that they work with DPW, so...
Any thoughts on the board on how we do that? Josh?
So, would the condition then, and confirm, Melissa, would just be subject to confirmation from Melissa DPW, that the supply is adequate to satisfy the needs of the, the product in the building?
And pressure?
Yeah, right, 'cause you have the love flow.
You need the fire flow, yeah.
Well, if we word it as such, does that preclude if it turns out that there is not adequate water supply, but the applicant is willing to, to increase the size of the water main flow?
Well, that would be...
Then still, since...
Would that, would, would that be, would we, you know, from, from your terminology, would that language suffice?
Yeah, 'cause we're just, we're just saying that you're getting approval from the DPW and the fire department, that it's being, and if they look at the calculations and run it through the town model and see that what they're proposing...
Okay.
Is acceptable, then they'll give the thumbs up.
Okay, great.
All right, Josh?
Mr. Chairman, you, you mentioned in here about a pump. That pump's supposed to increase the pressure, or are you pumping it, or just, that's to increase the pressure?
It's possible that we might need a pressure increasing pump, yes.
Okay, but you're not taking any water pressure away from any other business or what have you?
No, no, the way that that would work is we would, if we needed a pump, we would have holding tanks on the property that would flow, and then we would pump from the holding tanks into the building. So we wouldn't be drawing straight out of the system, out of the municipal system, and just decreasing pressure for everybody else.
Are these holding tanks above ground, or in ground, I mean, in ground?
Generally, they'd be in ground.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna make that part of the condition. Beta recommends that a condition that the applicant filed with the Charles River Pollution Control Board for the discharge of the sanitary sewer, and that Charles River consents to the board prior to start of the construction. And so, what it said on that is that you guys will file the required permits with the Charles River Pollution Control District before, prior to construct, start of the construction of the building. So would you be able to do that? Because you're, I'm just thinking, if you're designed, if you're designing the building, do you have enough knowledge of your flow to go to the Charles River, or have you done that yet?
Yeah, so we're actually working on the application right now.
Yeah.
And even though the numbers won't be hundred percent, it'll be at least ninety percent.
Okay.
And then, they also wanted to know all the different materials we're gonna be using to grow, so this way they can let us know if they'll accept it in the sewer line or not. So, that's why prior to us designing it, we do need to submit that application.
So we'll make that part of the, we'll make that part of the condition, and, yeah, so it's like, that's part of the condition for, what do we have that as? That is prior to start of the construction of the, so that would be the building permit, so that would work. Okay, all right, um, let's see here, we had architectural plans, so you guys provided the, you guys provided us with the landscape plan, we looked at that, so that's taken care of. And then the other note that they had in here, tree clearing is proposed up to the eastern property line, adjacent to Midway Lumber Yard, and home supply with a no-mow. Seed proposed between the parking lot property line. Vegetation is maintained within the wetland and fifty-foot buffer along the western property line at the rear of the development. They did affairs, uh, to first of the board. So on that, what was the...
I didn't have a condition, it was just pointing out that there's no landscaping on the...
Okay, and so...
On the side.
That's just gonna stay as a, no, would you guys mow that, or just, oh, I'm not supposed to ask questions, 'cause the public here is closed. We won't ask that question. All right, let's see, emissions, including nose and odor, should be completely confined and effectively confined within the building. And that's, we already talked about that, about the, the specialist that will come in. Uh, let's see here, the applicant will collaborate, collaborate with any consultant hired by the town for review of the plans. To mitigate noise disturbance, the chiller system cooling terrace is placed behind the building, so it is four hundred feet away from the road, and the air handler units will be behind the screen fence to renew, to reduce the noise. The applicant will file the E H I R with the board of health as required, once the systems have been finalized, as we progress with the design of the building, and we would make that, as we said before, part of the approval process. Do we wanna, on the, only question on the chiller is, on that, I know it's industrial in there, there's really nothing nearby, and it's near one oh nine, so I'm not too worried about if the, if the fans from the chiller unit runs, one oh nine's running all the time anyhow, I can hear that four miles away, so...
Yeah, I, I don't know how close they are to the, that's a...
The road doesn't matter, the road's noisy, this, this...
No, 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 I'm at the neighbor.
Yeah.
What it backs up to.
It backs up to the landscape business, right? They have like a...
Go ahead.
There's that one small house in front of the parking lot with the buses or stuff?
No, that's not, that's on the, I don't think that's a residence.
It's not a residence.
That's, I think that's their office.
Oh, okay.
It's all industrial in there, so, all right. So other than the, other than the, which we've already gone through, the condition with the Board of Health reviewing it, I think we should be all set with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
They talk about chemical waste will be transported, but where is it being stored? That's, is, Melissa, were you involved with that, where they're gonna store this waste? I know it's gonna be...
Yeah, I don't think they have a lot, 'cause what they said on here was they had actually small amounts of fire-rated cabinets, or, you know, it's basically, they don't process the stuff, is my understanding, it's just, they have some to do, some analysis of, basically, they have to test the product. So it's not like there's gonna be, you know, gallons and gallons of the stuff, and they have to, I think by, well, which we, I would have to, I can ask Melissa, but they have to, I mean, with us, we have to certify where the waste goes, so they go by Clean Harbor or something like that.
Exactly, yeah, they're gonna have regular Clean Harbor transport and disposal.
Right.
Is their, is their plan.
Just a question of where was, where it would be stored, either in the building or outside?
Believe in the building, in cabinets.
In the building, okay.
All right, I think, did I get everything on that?
Retaining wall?
Uh, oh, I'm sorry, retaining wall was in there, yes, that has to be, 'cause it's over four feet tall, has to be, and I missed that one, the retaining wall has to be, has to be engineered, you know, I think they want four feet, so that would be part of the, that'd be part of the building permit, actually, but...
There's also one F one on page four, in regards to the base flood elevation data they're working on, they have an application into FEMA, 'cause they have a little finger of flood zone that goes onto the property.
Okay.
So they're working on, or they filed a letter to have the area evaluated and removed from the site.
Right. So...
So just recommended a condition that, that be provided to the board, once it is approved by FEMA, or if it's not, then to address it at that time.
Okay, so they could, we could just make that as, so that would be, that's the F one?
F one, yeah.
Yeah, so F one, provide base flood elevation data, so a portion of the site is technically in the flood zone, and they're hoping to have that area taken out of the flood zone. If we just, they, if they make notice, so they, they make us aware of it, of the what they have, they're requiring, we can make, ask them to be required to let us know on that, and then if we, if we deem necessary, you would have to, what would you have to do on that?
Well, I would, I would provide, I mean, they're hoping that that line gets removed from, from the plan, and so then you'd have a letter in the file.
Let's see if FEMA doesn't, does it affect anything?
If it doesn't, then they have some of the parking lot in the flood area where you have to compensate, sort, you'd have to come up with storage compensation...
Okay.
For what you're filling, so it would be a plan changer.
If I may, the flood plain is also a resource area, so it's gonna be picked up when we handle the notice of intent with Conservation Commission as well, so they will also have oversight of it, but if there's any substantive change that comes out of it, we'll certainly come back for modification.
Right, I, I think we just make it a provision that they notify us of it, and just, we'll just make sure it gets picked up, so it sounds like it's covered.
Right, and I think if they get the letter that eliminates the line, then it goes in your file...
Right.
'Cause you have a site plan that has the line on it right now.
Yeah.
It'll keep it clean.
And then, well, we have, we have a bunch of stuff, so they also have, we had the hours of operations for the proposed facility, so on that one, you already had that in there for the deliveries and stuff, so that's already in there. So we did the, we actually went on this, but we went through those, the special conditions, but we need a decision, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so, okay.
Decision with special conditions, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I think we went through the special conditions, so if you could write a, or submit us a decision for that?
We write the decision and provide it to the board for review, is that the way?
Typically, that's how we...
You can do it either way.
Or beta grabs, okay, so, okay, I don't dance, so that sometimes also, so, so Melissa, you be able to write that up?
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, okay. And I'm sure they're gonna ask the question of when do we think we'd get that, you, do you think you'd have that for the next meeting?
For the next meeting, yeah.
Okay. Great.
Well, if it gets sent to them, they don't, it's not presented in the meeting.
No, we have to vote on it.
Oh, aren't you gonna vote on it to, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna vote on it, like, see, they're motion, they're doing the special conditions, I just...
Well, I wanna see the decision, though, so, without the, without the whole thing written out, so what do we need to do on that? So we can approve it, and then Melissa could write the decision?
Yeah, and I can just review it, yeah.
I can review, okay, all right, so I'm good with that?
Because it'll be, Camille always sends it to us...
Right.
To look over, to ensure that everything that was discussed here, that it's, you know...
All right, so...
Or you could, you could wait and have her do it, review it, and just build things.
If it's approved, does it start a clock?
I'm sorry?
Does the ti, it put a timeframe on it, once it's approved, to get the paperwork?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, two weeks has to be filed with the town, probably in two weeks once it's approved.
She's not gonna get it done in two weeks, I can say.
You want more time?
Well, if the board wants to comment on it, provide some comment back, I mean, I could get it done in two weeks, but if you want time, okay?
Well, I need, we could approve it, so we could approve it now, and then have a written decision, but if we have to modify it...
Although, if you approve it, I have to file a decision, as we filed it, so you can just, you can at your next meeting, if you want a scheduled discussion and vote on the application.
Okay, why don't we do that? I think that makes the most sense, I'd rather have it all put together in a package and have it done, than to have to go and have six different pieces, if that makes sense. So, so how do I, we went through the decisions?
We've discussed special conditions.
I mean, a motion, so...
No.
Okay.
We've discussed special conditions.
Okay, so...
So just withdraw your motion.
Right, so I withdraw the motion, and Melissa, you can write the decision for the next meeting, and we can go on with that.
Yep.
All right, good, well, thank you very much.
You guys good?
Did you want, yep, go ahead.
Just respectfully, curious, and I understood timeliness concerns for the applicant, if there were any way to get a vote tonight, but I, I did hear the discussion and your concerns about a written decision, but we did wanna make a request if it was possible.
Yeah, I just, on this one, if, I just would like to see everything all together. I don't think we have any issues on, you know, personally, I don't think there'd be any issues on it, I just wanna see it all in one document...
Mm-hmm.
So we can make sure we picked everything up.
Sure.
Even though I know it's not what you wanna hear, you'd have to wait till the next meeting, but I think I'd rather have it all in one place, so it's done.
Sure, absolutely.
So, okay, all right, so good, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you all for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nice.
All right, next, Acorn Place Senior Residential Development, minor modification parking request, decision continued, and that is a, this is a discussion, so we're gonna have to read this, right?
No.
Oh, nice, okay, yep, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dan Merrick with Legacy Engineering. Uh, we're, this is basically following up with formal plans on the discussion that we had, I'm not sure it was the last meeting, maybe the meeting before, but at Acorn Place, which is at the end of Pearl Street, we would like to add some parking spaces in between some of the units, it's a senior residential development, the applicant feels and the people who are living there prefer to have more spaces in proximity to their units, rather than having some of the more decentralized areas that we had, so we've proposed a plan that basically in the front village area here, which is the first part when you come in, of adding spaces, we already had spaces here between these units, adding them to the other side as well, and then we had a row of community spaces here, five, that we, we would eliminate, 'cause we're not gonna need them with all these extra parking spaces, and then in the rear village, we're only adding, because we have kind of a central area with some community parking here anyways, that's proximal to all these units, we're just proposing to add spaces here, here, and here, of those three buildings. So there's a net gain of eleven parking spaces, which we think is good and better for the people who are living here, and going to be living here.
And you talked about, now, there was a question on, you'll have to either relocate trees or plant new trees on...
Yeah, some of these spaces were paved incorrectly, so they're gonna be removed and redone, the space, the spaces all comply with the bylaws, nine by twenty-one. We have shown the revised location of the trees, we put them in front of the units, not between the units, so they would be street trees, so yes, anything that would have to be moved to make this happen is going to be moved.
And with that, just asking the question, so if you dig the tree up and move it, and it dies, and is that, are they required to, once you plant it?
They'll have to replace it.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, just one quick question, Dan, how many total parking spaces do we have for the complex with this proposal?
I will have to look that up, I do not remember. Every unit has a garage space and a space in front of it.
Okay.
So basically, what this does is for mostly the unit, it adds a third space.
Okay.
So, I don't have that number off the top of my head.
I'm just checking with the off-street parking by law, but I'm sure...
Yeah, I know, every, every unit has a garage space, and then a parking space in their driveway in front of their garage, this basically just gives them a third option for a guest or visitor, or something like that.
Okay.
And then, yeah, we have, snow storage, there's not an issue with that, we looked at that quick, that doesn't seem like it's gonna be a problem with that. You did have one which had an odd configuration, that was a special condition because of requirement of the homeowner, which is fine.
Yes.
So, we're good with that. All right, I don't have any issues, anyone on the board have any? All right, so do we, what do we do on this, can we make a motion?
It's a minor, to approve it as a minor modification.
All right, so I make a motion that we approve the plan, and if I can see the date on it.
It is nine one.
Okay, revise, revise, revision date nine one, of the Acorn Place layout, so I make a motion to approve the minor modifications to the parking.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, great.
Thanks for your time.
Good, thank you, Dan. Yes.
That's me.
All right, thirty-seven years. Uh, let's see, so next item, all right, so, next item on the agenda would be a planning board member seating arrangement discussion vote, so it's been brought up by a member that there, there's no specific seating arrangement for the planning board, and they wanted to talk about how that could be changed, modified, what the board thought, I will give you my opinion for what it is, is that the way that we're set up right now is, I need to be next to Camille, 'cause Camille has to whisper all the secrets of things that I'm supposed to be doing correctly. Nicole sits next to me, or the clerk, whoever the clerk would be, because we have to interact on reading the notices, and everyone sits elsewhere, and the way I look at it is, is I think everyone in the board's opinion matters as much, if not more than me, so in my eyes, you know, everybody's equal, no matter what you said, you know, I respect, you know, Melissa's obviously, and all the rest of the board, 'cause everybody brings a different perspective and different knowledge to the board, so seating arrangement has never specifically been something that I've been overly concerned with, I would put it out to the board, 'cause that was the request, is to see what the board has to say about their thoughts on seating arrangements. Nicole?
Seating arrangement doesn't mean anything to me, to be perfectly honest. As clerk, I sit next to you because I kick you under the table.
Correct.
If somebody else were to serve as clerk, I mean, theoretically, I could do my job at the other end of the table, if somebody got here before me and really wanted the spot of kicking your left ankle, so if somebody wants to come here and sit in my, sit here, I'm perfectly fine with it, I don't have a necessity to have an assigned seating plan.
Well, I don't think we need an assigned seating plan, but traditionally, when you guys were over there, whoever the chairman was, and Melissa was over here, and the only reason it got changed around was because of cameras, okay, having been a clerk for numerous years, and...
Having been a clerk for numerous years and sometimes acting chairman, um, senior member, um, I would be more apt to be sitting next to you guys in case something happened or you needed what clarifications or whatever, but it doesn't really matter. It, it's a lot easier if everybody's together, okay? You wanna do it alphabetically? I'm down the end, don't add to me. No, but, um, it's, you know, sometimes what happens if anything broke, don't fix it, so, um, I don't know what else to tell you. Okay, Alan?
No opinion.
Josh?
I'm associate member. You can stick me wherever you, wherever you feel.
Alright, um, so, um, you know, I, I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, we, uh, leave the seating arrangement, whoop, go ahead.
No, I'm just, I don't, do we need a motion if-
No, I wanna, I would like to formalize it. So, I would like to make a motion that, uh, we are going to, you know, per the discussion of the board, we're going to leave the seating arrangement as is. And we're, everyone's equal and other than, you know, I have to sit next to Camille, uh, and, you know, the clerk shouldn't sit next to the chairman, um, you know, anyone can sit wherever they want.
Second.
Alright, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Melissa, just, I forgot you were here, so-
She's not gonna be nodding.
Correct, no, I understand that. I'm not gonna ask that question. What I wanna do is let her go, so you can go home.
Okay.
And Caitlin, I forgot you were here, sorry. So, thank you very much.
No problem.
So, that goes to another, um, point is that, um, we, I looked online or in the town to see what the specific requirements are for a planning board member. So, there's been, uh, you know, uh, I would guess it would be rules that were handed down along the way that were explained to me, um, by, uh, either Camille or the, or senior people that have been on the board before, you know, the expectations, but there's nothing been formally put down in writing. So, uh, we, I asked Camille, and she can send it out afterwards to pull the, um, the select, the select boards, oh, she did, okay, so she included. So, so the select boards, um, requirements and expectations are in there. I went through myself and pulled out things that I thought were relevant to our board. And I changed some of the wording, so like on some of it, the meeting notes, the, the select boards, they have taken by the town administrator, et cetera, that obviously would be the executive secretary, which should be Camille. Then we also have some specific requirements for us on, um, attendance to the meetings, because if you are not at a meeting and there is a discussion and you miss two, I think it's two meetings in a row on that, one, I think we're allowed to miss.
Well, it's not so much consecutive meetings, it's more public hearings.
Okay.
I put out there, there's a copy and everybody's back in the mullings room, which the town staff, you're allowed to miss one public hearing on an application, as long as you repeat the minutes and sign something with the town clerk. If you miss more than one public hearing on an application, you're allowed, you're eligible to vote for it to something.
Right, so with that, they, you know, if you're gonna be voting on something, they wanna make sure that you're actually there and, you know, at the meeting and, uh, and there, so. So, I think, you know, we should go through this and we should just establish, establish a baseline of rules and expectations for the planning board. I also, I have on mine, I actually typed mine up earlier, which I can distribute later. Um, we cannot, we cannot go back and forth on these, so what you can do is, we can, how do we do that? I can, we can send, I can send it to Camille, she can distribute it. You can look at them and then next meeting, we can combine them all into a document, okay? But we can't have, you can't have discussion back and forth, because that'd be conflict with the open meetings. But what I'd like to do by next meeting is have a packet together that Camille can formalize, um, we'll have to send it to town council. That we could have ourselves a set of, you know, expectations and, uh, rules for this.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Rob?
I did do some research online of some, some of the other towns within the state. And some people, some towns do have very minimal, a very simple two, three sentence paragraph like we have. Some have very extensive information. I did pull, ones that I found that have, um, you know, a good, a, a good detail with regards to what a planning board's response, members' responsibilities are. What the, both the board itself, there are, the board's responsibility as well as a membership's response, a member's responsibility. So, I, with your permission, I will send those to Camille to distribute so that everyone, um, just, just as a starting reference to see what some other towns have done. What has been listed, a lot of the towns do, these, a lot of these towns do reference, um, the different state statutes that we do operate under, um, forty-one, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one A, which is what establishes the planning board. Eighty-one K through G double G, which is the subdivision control, the forty A, which is the zoning act. So, I think if we're going to establish a operating policy, some procedures, listing these items and, and indicating that it is the responsibility of a planning board member to, to some extent familiarize themselves, I mean, at, at least to have read it. And it just gives, because once we do this, I would recommend that we take some of this and update our planning board webpage, so that if we're setting procedure, we should be putting that out for, um, for the community to be able to easily find.
Okay, so that's good. I mean, that's, from, from a lawyer, that's excellent, so we wanna have the, all sorts of details and rules from chapter twelve.
And this is why I sit next to them.
No, no, so I, that's part, this is part of the discussion, so that, I agree, it's good to be super granular, but there's also something to be said for its, uh, there was like, you know, a general. If you have to tell your soldiers everything they're gonna have to do, they're gonna look to you for everything. If you can kinda give them the framework, they'll go to think on their own. So, what I would say is, I think that we need a balancing act between having the planning board have enough information that, hey, we're responsible for this, but I don't wanna get into personally, I don't wanna get into, you know, mass general law, chapter forty-one, section two, sub-section six, you know. So, I, I, I would personally like to have it a little more, but yes, agreed, we are underneath that, you know, general overall law. So, just one thing in here, um, so I, I did pull the, where Camille sent us the, um, select boards. So, I'm just gonna read from the select board's, um, duties, responsibilities, and obligation of the board members, and this is for the select board. A member of the board in relation to his or hers responsibilities to the community shall recognize that his or her primary role is to set policy, which is what we do, we're decide on, you know, are we following the rules here? Recognize that he or she is a member of a team and shall abide by all board decisions once they're made. Be well-informed concerning the duties of a board member on both state and local levels, which we don't really have state levels here, we just have basically the town. Recognize that all board members are elected by the community and therefore have an obligation to make decisions that they believe best support the entire community. Accept the office of the, they say, select board planning board member as a means of unselfish public service, not to benefit personally or professionally from his or her board activities. In all appointments, avoid political patronage by judging all candidates on merit, experience, and qualifications only. And, and this will make you happy, be familiar and able to abide by the provisions established by the Commonwealth and mass general law, and this would be for the select, uh, board. Chapter two sixty-eight A, as they apply to municipal officials. Be familiar with and abide by the open meeting law and public records law as they apply to elected officials, which we all have to do. Endeavor to establish sound, clearly defined policies or decisions for us, which will direct and support the administration for the benefit of the people of the town. And for us, what we wanna do is, we wanna try to, you know, make our decisions as they, we have in our decisions to, you know, benefit the, the, the moral character of the thing, make sure it's gonna fit and is it gonna work well in, in the town. Recognize and support the administrative chain of command and refuse to act independently on complaints as an individual outside the administration. What else? Let's skip those. Make decisions only after all the facts under question have been presented or discussed. Uphold the intent of executive session and respect the privileged communication that exists therein. And treat with respect the rights of all members of the board despite differences in opinion. So, that, that was from the select board. I think a lot of those items directly transform over, translate over to us. And, um, you know, if you guys think there's things we should add in there, but I, I think that pretty well summarizes, you know, we're here to do, we're here to work for the public. We're trying to make the best decisions we can on the way we see the, and with public input, on how projects should be handled in the town. And you get, you get input from all sorts of sides. You get people who wanna do it, you have people that don't wanna do, uh, so we have to kinda take it and straighten out that and pick the best path that we see will work for the town. And, you know, and get input from everybody, because I, like I said, I, you know, we've had input from people that I, one hundred percent polar opposite of, you know, what my mindset was, but they brought up some really good points. And I think that's the great thing of having a public discussion in a board is, somebody will bring up something you never thought of, and I think that's, you know, good for them for coming forward, appreciate them taking the time. And, uh, you know, that's my thought on this, uh, and, and I think, like I said, if we can create our framework of what we wanna do, we'll have that document going forward. That's my, that's my thought for the day. Yeah, any other comments from the board? Okay, alright, so I think we should work on, let's try to get this roughed out for the next meeting, you know, take whatever you want out of these, I cut and paste it and put it together, anything you wanna add in. And then next meeting, we'll go through, if you could maybe highlight any of your, you know, changes, I made a specific, you know, couple of lines in there, highlight those or separate those, so it's easier for Camille to find. We could kinda go through the, you know, the, the bulk of it and then we could go through all the highlighted parts.
Mr. Chair, when would you prefer that we submit these changes?
Well, it has to go to Camille.
Right.
And then she can distribute it, but we can't, I think we cannot go back and forth with each other.
Right, you can't deliberate amongst yourselves.
When, when would you prefer to have, like any-
Whenever you, whenever you want to get them to me, it's fine.
I'm putting mine in tonight, as soon as we leave the meeting.
Oh, boy.
There's no pressure.
But I think you're all suggesting that it's a good idea too, because I did some online research for other planning boards and it kinda sums up, you know, because you don't, you don't have as much authority, obviously, as the select board administrator, but it condenses what your responsibilities are, and I think, I would, I would give Nicole time maybe to do that, let me distribute that.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I already, I've already pulled it, I mean, I printed it up, I have it saved, I can email that to you.
Yeah.
And then you can combine it with the research you have and send it out to everybody.
Right, like, because I think something, like, I probably have what you have or something similar to it.
Probably.
And then you can compare that with what I printed out for you tonight and then certainly email me any suggestions. I can try to edit it and then have something probably to look at if it makes me- But yeah, feel free whenever you have anything ready to get it, send it to me and I'll take care of it.
Well, you should be able to get that done tomorrow. I mean, you have nothing pressing.
Nothing going on.
I mean, you get, you clearly are getting, what, ten, twelve hours of sleep a night, right?
I had a lot of time.
Ten or twelve, ten or twelve minutes a night?
Alright, good, well, thank you everybody for that. Um, alright, so next one would be proposed special condition, uh, discussion from Alan, um, and we have that here, so. Alright, so Alan, do you wanna, um, we went through this last meeting.
Yeah, I took, uh, took the advice of, uh, of transforming the previous discussion to, to amend it for special permits rather than a bylaw. So, the purpose is pretty much the same, to mitigate the concerns and frustrations of abutters and other local residents over noise hazards and inconveniences during development in residential districts. Uh, so the proposal is the planning board to include in special permits for parcels of four or more units. Requirement that developer maintain a website or email list providing the planning board, abutters, and other interested parties with the schedule of work and the ability to submit questions about the status and schedule of work for the project. The frequency of required updates to be determined by the planning board during the hearing process. Larger projects should be updated at least monthly, smaller projects every two months. Schedule should include but not be limited to land clearing, tree removal, removal of soil and other materials, paving, road closures, demolition, and other activities with excessive noise or inconvenience. Responses to questions should be addressed in a timely manner. Link to the website or email address to be posted on the planning board's webpage. And the penalty, we talked a little bit about that. Failure to abide will result in appearance for the planning board for possible disciplinary action including suspension of special permit. Repeated failure may result in revocation of special permit.
Okay, I mean, it's, you know, I think, I got, I got it, I think it makes sense. As, like I said, as I go back, as a builder, it gets more homework for us, but I got it, you know, if you shut the road down or cut trees down or something. And I think it seems reasonable with, you know, if, the biggest thing, I think, is if they're not getting back to the homeowners. Now, with that, we will have to have some, we'll have to get some stuff, because there were some issues up on one of the developments that's already gone in, that there was a, uh, group or people or whatever it was that was bombarding, uh, Camille and the select ward and the police. And so, and it, you know, there may have been, uh, you know, it may have been less people that were, uh, that affected or were interested in this than, so we have to, we have to weigh on that a little bit. Not, not saying that some of those items didn't go on, but, uh, everyone has a different perspective on, um, on things, so, you know, a truck driving by, you know, I'd look at it and say, there's a dump truck going by. And someone else would look at it and say, oh, my God, the dump truck's driving by, so, you know, I, I would say that if they, if, we would have to, as a board, review those and talk to the people to determine. Hey, is this something or is this just someone that never wanted the trees cut down in their backyard and they're, you know, pinging the guy or us over and over again, because that's what we have to be a little careful of, you know.
I envision it if, uh, if there's a complaint, it's gonna come to us.
Yeah.
We're gonna hear from the resident, at which, at which point we decide, is this valid enough to, we wanna bring the, the-
Person.
Developer in to have a discussion with them. I'm gonna swing the mighty hammer of Thor just because someone says boo.
Yeah, no, no, I think it sounds, so, uh, any other good thoughts from the board?
Um, I do have a couple. I just wanna clarify, um, Alan, when you say, planning board to include in special permits for parcels of four or more units, I, you mean in subdivisions? Because special permits can be any, like, this is the marijuana, what, that was a special permit, so are you talking about all, do you want this to apply to all special permits?
In residential districts.
Okay.
So, that wouldn't apply to warehouse, for example.
Okay, but it was just because you said special permits of four units or more, so I didn't know if you meant just, so should, I think that should be clarified for subdivisions.
Well, I think if someone, not necessarily, say someone tears down a house and builds a four-family. Well, I guess we don't allow that currently anyway, but we may allow that someday, zoning changes, um, you know, or small condo complex, I don't think it needs to be a subdivision per se.
But it's only in the residential district.
Yeah, somehow that, yes, because by saying special permit, that applies everywhere, so, yeah, so we just need to add-
Residential.
Then my only other question is, how, where will the, who's gonna be responsible for monitoring the, to determine, um, if a developer is- if a developer is keeping track with, if they're, they're updating, if we put this?
Yeah, well, that's, then that's one thing on that, is, there are two things on that, so, which would mean, let's say we have four projects going on. So we'd have to make sure that it would, somehow it has to be, like she said, maintained. So, okay, let's say, what's the one that we just put, Woodward. We're going to cut down trees, guys, so they put it on the website, and they have a week of rain delay, they don't cut the trees down because of the week of rain, and then they cut the trees down a week later, you know, if, if they, you know, or even, let's say a month later, we have a hurricane, and they don't do it. So, you know, how, how do we make sure that it's being maintained? And the other thing is with, you know, let's say Susie Cream Cheese says, hey, I had a big dump truck go by my house, and I don't like the truck going by because it rent by really fast, I mean, and that happens. Legitimate question, goes to the thing, how do we know that the developer responded to them? So copy the planning board, well, that means it goes to Camille.
I don't think we need to micromanage it, I think it's, it's going to be self-policing to the extent that if there's a problem, it will come to us. If there's a complaint, if there's no complaint, it's not a problem. Yeah, I mean, there's, it's imperfect, certainly scheduling will change.
Right.
But it's directionally beneficial to the community. Again, you're having a birthday party for your four-year-old scheduled, and, you know, they said they're going to cut the trees down, you don't want to be out there while they're cutting trees down.
Right.
So you don't have the party, and then you reschedule for the next week, and they're cutting the trees down. But, you know, you, you have had an opportunity to communicate at least and say, hey, we're planning on this party, can, can you tell us if you're going to be working that day?
Right, so the only thing now.
It's really communication.
No, and I got it, so the only thing that, then again, remember, I'm nervous, so then that gets me, makes me nervous is, okay, they're going to have a birthday party for the four-year-old, and we're going to do it on Saturday the twelfth, well, rains on Saturday the twelfth. Okay, so then they go, the people, you know, have rescheduled, okay, well, not if you're doing it on the Saturday the twelfth, they rent a tent, and then all of a sudden, I've got this tent, they're cutting trees down, you guys, and then whose fault is that? You know, I know the developer, you know what I mean, is that we've, I just get nervous about, you know, the communication, and you guys let this happen? How did the planning board let this happen? You know what I'm saying, it's, it just, I get a little nervous about, you know, you know, they, well, I reached out like you guys said to do, and I communicated with a guy, and like I said, the guy, the, the tree axe, the hydro axe that cuts down the trees broke, and so he didn't tell anyone or didn't know what was going to happen, and then, you know, like I said, I worry about all those things. So not saying, was your ideas about it here?
No, I think they're legitimate concerns, but I think also that we haven't built in statutory penalties.
Right.
We have the ability to explain to the petitioner that, yeah, you have, you know, you have valid complaint, but really it's an act of God or whatever, we.
It's a God.
You know, they couldn't do the work because of this.
Okay.
You know, if we don't have this mechanism, they're going to do the tree cutting during the four-year-old party anyway.
Right.
It's just a tool to try to improve communications, which are lacking, that's. As to Nicole's idea, yeah, we should move, however the wording is, residential districts with special permits.
I referenced the specific zoning districts. So you would say R S B, or, you know, mixed use, whatever they're labeled, so you're specifically excluding like I whatever or C whatever, and then you know exactly pursuant to the zoning map which areas in development are concerned.
Right. And I, I think the only thing I might put on this is, is on this is, I think this is a, that it's clear that the, the schedule is a guide. I think we should make sure that, you know, we're, we're requesting the developer to provide a guide for this, not a schedule. Schedule means, you know, you're going to hit those dates. I think if we have it as a guide of, hey, we're thinking we're going to clear the trees on the week of the whatever.
If they also request they do an email blast or something.
Well, yeah, blasting the neighbors have to be alerted anyhow, that's a requirement.
No, I don't mean explosions, I mean, an email blast, send a quick email, if they're going to maintain an email list rather than a website.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it takes two minutes, send an email to your group.
Yeah.
You know, we're working tomorrow.
Mr. Chair, may I bring up one more point? So I noticed here, Alan, you said, the frequency of required updates to be determined by planning boards, we have discretionary power here. But then you also state subsequently, larger projects should be updated at least monthly and smaller projects every two months. Is that just additional guidance for us?
That allows discretion to the board, as opposed to saying we have to do it this often.
Right, I'd almost.
As a guideline.
Yeah, I'd almost strike that and just say, it's up to the planning board based on the size of the project, what we think adequate notice would be, it's just a point.
I agree, because there's, because your, your opinion of, of large versus small could be different than my opinion of large versus small.
Exactly, so I would just keep the discretionary power within the board, and then just get rid of that sentence that follows, because it almost contradicts the discretion. It's just a thought.
Yeah, no, it makes sense.
Can I just make a comment? This is obviously going to be on a case-by-case basis depending on the application.
Correct.
So this isn't something that you have to finalize and approve as is right now verbatim. This is something that, a special condition, like we have standard special conditions that, you know, are kind of on a template. This can be something that for a particular application, you can tweak it and reword it however you want, you don't have to commit editing this and approving it as it is verbatim right now.
What I would like to do though, I think, personally, is I think we should define what it is, and I think we should have a document so we don't get, you know, put on, hey, it's for these areas, and this is the general wording for it. So at least it's not, we can't, someone can't come back to us and say, oh, you guys, you had me do it, but you didn't have, you know, Joe Smith do it. And, you know what I mean, is that it's, if it's out there, and it is part of a special permit condition that we could put in, and it's defined.
Right, but like, our other special conditions aren't defined, they're all tweaked per application. You know what I mean, you, you have the power to put whatever you want in any decision, any special condition, and this is only going to be used for certain projects. In my opinion, I mean, obviously, you guys can do what you want, but you don't have to batten this down verbatim right now to, like, this is overall something you want to incorporate into special, into a decision for certain applications.
If someone came to us tomorrow, could we incorporate this if we haven't voted on it?
Yes, oh, absolutely.
Yeah, this isn't, this, we're not, so we're not taking a vote tonight to say we're making this a part of some sort of rule and regulation.
So it's just guidance.
Right, this is just something that we can.
It's not apply a zoning bylaw or a bylaw or a regulation, you're just going to.
Right, so when it comes up at the next, you know, the next residential construction, right.
Well, senior residential community development unit that's in.
Then that's something we can, we can discuss and find out, because we don't, we can, if, if it's a smaller situation, and we say to the builder, well, we'll let you do email blasts, well, inevitably, we're going to have somebody that says, I don't have email, I don't have a computer in my home, I don't have, you know, it's, if it's an older person that doesn't have, you know, that's not tech savvy, or it doesn't, or if it's someone that doesn't have it, you know.
Yeah, but this isn't, like you said.
I, I do like the way, the way you're referencing it, because we may find, after doing this once or twice, we may have to completely relook at it, because
Sure.
if it comes back, I mean, people are going to come, are going to bring their problems to us, whether this is here. And, but I do like the concept of it, because I think if we can get it out there to encourage the developer to be, you know, fourth, a little more fourth, just providing information, I know it's going to make more work for you, but, you know, then we are limiting those calls with the dump truck drove by, and, you know. So I, I do think the whole concept of it, encouraging the developer to be more open with the abutters, is, I think that's, that is beneficial.
May I ask one more question?
Yep.
How often, maybe it's for you, Camille, with our special conditions, do we review, something like, there's a proposed special condition with town council? Just, just a thought, just wondering.
I'm sorry, did you use your, I'm really.
Oh, that's okay. So how often do we review special conditions with town council?
For what?
If, if we have, just any condition, if there's something we want to add, and we want to stay out of hot water, make sure that we're well within our rights, do we, do we typically review that with town council? I'm just curious.
If there's one, like, that's, if it's calling for a penalty or something like that, then yes, that would, like, if we're going to use that for the first time, and you want to incorporate a penalty or any type of punitive issue, we have to run that by town council.
Okay, all right.
Like, you know, any generic special condition, you can word however you want.
Of course.
Anything that references something like that, we would definitely want to get town council's opinion, draft a decision, and send it off and just say, you know, is this okay for us to do?
Yeah, okay, great, that was a.
So going back to the original part of making, and I know we're going to modify it, but what I, I think Josh's point is well taken. Let's, let's define it clear, so it's these districts, let's write it pretty much how we think we're going to use it, knowing that we can still modify it. At least we start off with something clean.
Absolutely.
Then we send it to town council and say, hey, you know, what do you think about this, and get some feedback on that? And then, then we could just make that as part of our special condition, so. And, and like I said, we may, we may end up, we'll see how it works and go from there, so. You know, part of the other thing is, we, we do want to have some buy-in from the builder, because, you know, the builders have to jump through, I mean, I know that's part of what they, why they make money on the thing, but there's so many hoops they have to jump through. We want to try to make this reasonable enough that they could say, you know, like you said, email blast, blasting next week, boom, out to everybody and dumped, so it's pretty easy. I think if you did that, you know, and we were reasonable on, you know, hey, you know, Mrs. Smith contacted you and asked about the big boom she heard in the middle of the night, it was thunder, and you didn't get back to her, you know, like, you know, I, you know, I think there's some, you know, there's some stuff we would have to think about on that, so. All right, well, I'd say if we can get that back for the next meeting, we can put that in, and we'll have to have Camille send it off to town council and take a peek at it, and see what they have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up, pressure, appreciate it. All right, so, next. Approval from the minutes from August tenth, two thousand twenty-one, I read them, they were fantastic. So I make a motion that we approve the minutes from August tenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
All right, motion's made, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, let's see, December meetings?
Yeah, is, we already have October twelfth and November ninth scheduled, does December seventh work for everybody?
I will check, that probably usually what happens is, that's the date of my, no matter what date you put, no matter what date you put, that'll be the date of my Christmas party, but let's go for that.
Good for me.
Pending is the M C E O D discrepancies zoning map, and.
I'm going to reach out to Mike Jim Pedro to see if, I might get myself ideas together to go over that.
He was off in Maine for a while, I think he's back.
Yes, I think he's back, yes, because we may not get it on the farm for the fall, but it's okay, it's listed in the history, and we'll just make it till the spring, hold on, but I'll see if we can set something up to me together.
Okey-dokey, all right. So, oh, and we have logs updates, did you put that in here?
I did not, no, because actually there were a couple of that, there was nothing, there was nothing to do with the planning.
Yeah, yeah, there was nothing to do with the planning board, I'm just trying to think, so on the DPW building, on that, they have got the siding on the staff building, the interior finish of it is being worked on, they're going to start millwork, I think, next week on the DPW building, and they're going to start to put the skin on the, the vehicle building, coming up, I think, next week. Sewer's all taken care of, there was a few bumps in the road on that, they get that all straightened out, so the sewer's all tied in, and they're going to be ready to pave the next few weeks or month, within a month, I think is what that, so there. And, you know, there, the anticipation was, it was sometime around end of November, I think the thing's going to be completed, and it looks like it's going to all come in, despite everything. You know, the contractor managed to get stuff and get it on site and worked out some design issues, and the building committee, you know, did a great job of getting that done, so. And what else? I think that was about it.
Because it wasn't really a development project, so that's from the.
So, all right, well, on that note, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor of that?
Aye.
All right, great, thank you, upstairs.